In the order, I'm going to ask Councilman Steen if he'd give us the invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your gracious traveling mercies bringing us each and everyone here safely. We ask you to be with us as we look over the budget of the betterment of the county. Be with each and everyone here. Be with the local law enforcement as they go on calls. Take this food, bless it, nurse our body. By thy name we pray. Amen.
All right, moving to the approval of agenda. Second. All in favor?
I'm okay standing.
Stand. Okay, any against? Any voted for? Susan? We voted to approve the agenda item, all four except for Ms. Lawson, excuse me?
Five.
And except for Ms. Lawson, she abstained. There were no opposition. Okay, moving to the discussion of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating budget. I'm going to move straight to our administrator.
Okay, everybody ready to go? Well, what we normally do each year, as you all know, have been here before, is go through the budget and have separate iterations, several different iterations that we've fine tuned it. So this is the next iteration after we've spent our, a lot of hours going through expenses and revenue to try to get it to a point where you often then make decisions on budget requests or items that you may have an interest in changing. This gives you a starting point with accurate, with accurate as available numbers at this point. So, you know, as we did last time, you know, I had some terms. I'm not going to read those to you if you're favored by those. So we'll just launch into it. And of course, as always, interrupt me if you have questions, whatever you need to do as we go along. So general fund budget, we started, had a starting point of what was approved last year, if you remember. You all saw this last time. So this is what we had last year, with about, used about 380 out of reserve, if you remember. And of course, you know, I make the point again that the actual use of the fund balance now is, is more accurate because of the less open positions we've had. You know, we've been able to bring stuff up in law enforcement and detention center and other areas so that people are, they're recruiting people and they're staying. You don't have as much turnover. So that number over the last 10 years might end up meaning that we end up being breaking even or going up a little bit with fund balance or down a little bit, but typically they're not using total amount. But every year we plan to use a total amount. But that's where we were in the year we're in now, that ends June 30th. This, this next one is a little bit of an eye chart. So you've got it in your pocket. I'd suggest if you don't mind, open it up and send this one, the landscape one. And I think these people in all of you can see it a little easier because they're closer to it. So what I did was provide you some detail with change ups and downs. A number of them were in there from last time, and some of those have even been tweaked because we had another month of doubt. Some of these likely could be less next year, but we're planning on continuing the trends that we see for this year. But this is where we want, where we feel we have to have a starting point. I could go through them all. I'll go quickly through them all, just make sure everybody's on the same page. So every year when you do a cost of living increase, you do it for six months, and then the next year you have to pay the whole, the whole year. So that comes home the next year. That's happened every year for seven years. The detention center food contract had an inflationary increase. I think originally, the last time, we had a bigger increase, but some of that's reimbursed by the federal inmate. So that came down. Other little small things, training, travel and bills in detention center. The county share of state retirement. The county has to pay into the state retirement system for employees, and it went up 1% this year. So that's what that number is. We've seen increases in fuel in the sheriff's department and public works and buildings just because of fuel costs and the anticipated predictive increase over the summer. Our general liability insurance, which ensures, you know, the buildings we have, also, you know, someone who maybe fell or was hurt in one of our facilities, that's what that is, that went up $30,000. The portion the county pays for insurance for employees has gone up $30,000. We had an inflationary contract increase in the ADP payroll system. We have ADP to process payroll as of a lot of different places, and it went up per employee. We've had overtime in the sheriff's office, you know, and of course, that may change some, but based on the current trend with the, with the fringes and all, that went up. We had lease payments for vehicles we already had. You know, they true that up every year with enterprise and some of the vehicles we had to put equipment on with some law enforcement vehicles, some other vehicles. So that was an increase there. I mean, recreation, Mr. Darius is doing a good job in increasing participation. He's got some ways to go. But these increases are the bare minimum to cover. There's 50 more people playing basketball. You know, if that goes up, you pay officials, you pay the uniforms, all of that. That number can fluctuate during the coming year. If he's successful, it may go up even more than that. But he's also working to make sure that, you know, we have reasonable fees for participation and we're collecting some of that. We had weighed some of those in the past before he came here. Workers' comp went up about $75,000 or $100,000, but when we went to review everything, when we actually paid the bills last year, it was less than what was budgeted. So when I do these numbers, but we're all sitting there doing the numbers, we're comparing it to last year. So last year was actually budgeted as a little high. So the impact on the budget was a little bit less than the bill was. And you all, for me, with workers' comp, you know, we have more employees on payroll now. There's a vacancy to be fulfilled, and that increases the workers' comp. We did find some cost reductions. We had our current finance director is paid as a contracted employee where his firm is, and we had part of that in payroll in the employee line and part of it in the contract line. And when we resolved that, that resulted in a decrease. Had a reduction in administrator's salary and a reduction in the public services director's salary, who was leaving the county on May 15th. Took that back to a starting point. So that saved you some money there. We, the county has a policy that says if people retire from the county with a certain amount of service, that they can continue to keep their insurance, and the county pays a part of that. And every year you have to look, because unfortunately, there are a lot of elderly people, and some of them come off because they die. And so we've had a decrease in that. That can change every year depending on who gets on that. But it really, you're only going to see folks with a lot of years, I think, 20 years, five, 25 years service to the county. So you don't have like a whole bunch of people in mind to do that. Every year, for the last seven years, council has approved a compensation adjustment amount over the 2%. We took that out. That's something y'all can discuss. Last year, we had to pay to maintain the radio antenna out on Tatum Highway or out, Cable isn't in there, y'all probably know what that is? That was a last year thing, so it didn't need to be in the budget this year again. And then there were miscellaneous here and there, you know, adjustments that took 69.5 out. There were no real cuts of anything that was asked for. This is just basically things that needed to be reconciled to actual expenses or forecasted expenses for next year. That's a lot of detail that I thought it was important for you to see that. Revenue, we talked about last time. We went through this. We were able to get some more information. A lot of the state stuff doesn't come in until the last quarter, but basically after changes, we were able to see, basically the flat was flat. Now, last year, you had over a million two in revenue growth. This year, you have none. So you can see the inflation area or the different things that have impacted the budget. Any else have any questions, please? So if you roll all of this up, you roll those expense changes that you just solved up, and you roll that revenue up, you're at about 880, about $900,000 in deficit. So, you know, if you just took that out of reserve or whatever, that's how much you're short. You know, again, the target was always around 300. And that's before any budget request. And you'll see in a minute, you know, there are budget requests, and some of them are very legitimate, that, you know, are to be considered by council. So just as a reminder, now maybe not council, but anybody who's here that wasn't here last time, the state sets a limit on how much you can go up on taxes every year. And you use up what you had last year, and then this year, inflation was so high that it came in at 8%. So that's about 7.9 mills. So if you were to take that maximum allowed tax increase, if you were to raise taxes to maximum amount per law, it would generate $515,000 and reduce your deficit to around 365. Just to give you, just a reference, so you know where you are. Everybody good so far?
I must say my questions should be answered.
Feel, feel free to interrupt me, because sometimes I'll, you know, forget. So next up is a list of budget requests we've had. And you can see, you know, there's, there's real license, you know, there's things to be considered. You know, I think that it'd be appropriate, your next step, not necessarily today, but it should be, like the sheriff's office has a number of them, to just understand what they have and what they need and what you all can consider. So the first thing was, was an increase in comp for the, for everybody but SROs that's declarable at the sheriff's department. The SRO increase we're talking about will be recovered straight from the school district.
What's wrong with that? If you don't mind. Yeah, when we asked him for a $3,000 increase, that money coming out of the state, the money that we were talking about, that will compound from the, the federal inmates. So that being included in our budget because it's not part of my budget.
I guess council can decide where they want to take it from the grid.
If the sub-actives are there now, it looks like it's coming out of my budget, and that's not what we're asking. I'm not asking for that to come out of my budget.
Well, I think there's, there's a slide coming up about the federal inmate program.
They're saying, that's what they're looking at. That's what they see. They see me asking for $119,000 for increases.
$119,000.
Are you, are you asking for a $3,000 increase from some source for the people?
Yeah, but not, no, not from the people. No, 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 no. I'm asking, that way it would be coming from, what we choose to do it, would be coming from the federal inmates, which has nothing to do with my fiscal budget.
Okay, well, that's something that y'all can hash out.
You should get it up. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, well, do you read others here? Everybody here heard that camera's on? We got it.
Go ahead.
Because this is where we put all the budget.
Again, it's misleading what they're looking at.
Is anybody unclear about the point?
Is, is the detention, the federal inmate program money coming in, in, in the budget?
No. No.
Oh, this is separate from. Y'all need to stop and repass the, redo the presentation I can.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You understand.
I think everybody gets what you're saying.
It's a while that you put it up, you know, it's curious.
Because I think you're going to find that you don't have enough money in the federal program to pay for all that.
Well, I mean, there should be up there.
Okay, do you read others?
Since you say it's duly noted though, sir, that mean really and truly, if that's not the monies that's in our pocket, because I did hear in a meeting there, but that money's coming in, it's going to be in a separate account. That was said in the meeting. So if that's in a separate account, and they said that, it's a separate account. It should not be included in here because that's not even our money that's going in this budget. It's not.
Well, again, I'm here to present the facts. I won't be here to discuss all this, and y'all can compare it. Okay, Sheriff, I will make another one shoot for you to make you happy about that.
No.
But I'm telling you all, we have, it's just not, who has it for?
Is it estimated what the federal program will bring in to the county?
Would you like me to skip to that slide?
Right, so we need to let administrator finish what we're doing, but we, we know.
He's glad to speak to that. He had projected 15 inmates per day at a reimbursement rate of $64 for 360 days. And that reimbursement amount becomes 345, $345,600. Now, just to give you a little history, just so you have an idea of kind of where we've been in terms of the revenues that we've seen come into that fund. The first month, which had obviously, there were fewer prisoners, $13,500 that was received roughly. So that annualized amount ends up being about $162,000. The next month, which was March billing, roughly $22,500, so that became annualized $270,000. Based on 15 inmates at $64 a day for 360 days, that becomes $345,600. Now, just to balance, I added $6,000 as transportation reimbursement. We don't necessarily know what that number will be, and obviously, we'll have costs involved with that. I'm sure that the reimbursement may be greater than that, but we'll have costs as well. But in terms of the actual expenditures, the expectation is that we could pay for the vehicles from this, this account as you had approved in the current fiscal year. So six new vehicles at $45,000 each, and of course, the vehicles plus equipment becomes about $45,000. If we look at the medical contract, roughly 20% of the medical contract, contract covers up the 75 inmates. So 15 inmates, 20%, that would be $33,000. Food service, that's based on 15 inmates at a cost of $9 per day for 360 days. That becomes 48.6. That is what we presently have in terms of expectations for, you know, this, this federal inmate program budget. Any questions about that? I'd be glad to, you know, discuss this, but, you know, of course, these are preliminary numbers based on what we think are the current estimates.
So it's break even?
It, it, well, it is, but of course, it's providing for six new, it's paying for six new police vehicles, which is really significant. It's also helping to create part of the cost of our medical contract as well. So those are all elements that we're seeing are related to the housing of those inmates.
And those items that you mentioned are not on this budget request?
No, I think let me ask you, Sheriff. So if, if there's not enough funding in here, you still want to ask for it, or you just want to put it in here and sit and look on it here? That's probably the easiest way to clear it up.
What we intend to do is, we met again, and to be fair to everybody, county and all, we, we chose to give periodic, within three years, bonuses for staff. And by doing the bonuses to the staff, then we can control and know just how much money we have coming in and how much we'd be paying up. Because if we do stick with paying $3,000 across the board, it would maybe put us in a deficit, and we understand that. We're not trying to get in a deficit. We're not trying to put the county in the deficit. And should that program go away, we would lose it, which I don't think we can. Then we would be stuck, the county and we would have to have to pay, pay for an increase in salary that we didn't have funding for. So we decided not to do the salaries, and because this wasn't in the budget, I didn't think it was necessary for anyone. So we decided just to give bonuses every four months to everybody at work who's definitely in a field of anything. And we'll control how much that bonus is. And right now, we're looking at $15,000 bonus. But that is as the money comes in. We do it period by period. That way, that affects the budget in any way.
Well, any expenditures out of any fund that requires approval of county council. So y'all can't have your own bonus program without their approval.
Well, I, I don't see why they wouldn't approve us giving bonuses if we can't give them raises. The money is there. The money is in the account. It does not affect the budget in any way, and it's money that these people truly deserve. And I wouldn't think anybody would say, no, that, but obviously, they do vote on it, and it does not bother the budget.
So, so the, the $3,000 that's up there now, as far as, you, you, so you're saying you don't want any, I mean, so you don't want any raises to any, any, any department?
Those are general fund raises.
No, I never asked for a general fund raise in the first place. I never asked for a general fund raise. I asked for raises based on the money that's coming in from the federal inmates, which has nothing to do with the general fund budget.
And it looks like, let me just be clear, have you, I'm looking at the 2022 budget, and then I'm looking at the 2024 proposed budget figures. Have you already, and everybody, because I'm just getting this package. That's really why I did not vote on it.
No, no budget increases are in that.
Right, and in this package. No, no budget increase. Nope, automatic 2% is in this.
Just that stuff on the first sheet that we can't vote.
I just wanted to be sure that, nope, that's not already put in here.
Okay, so looking at the list here, which other ones you don't need to put is not general fund? The additional lieutenant, is that a not general fund? Councilor, here.
That one. No, that one isn't a general fund. Well, no, that one isn't a general fund. That one isn't a general fund.
How about the detention center, this one here?
Increase of all, no, that one's not.
And then the only other one were vehicles, and we saw, Wes said, put those into prison fund, so that I can do that. Is it prison fund, or I can leave it here?
I think, see, I would think it goes in the general fund. I thought it was the responsibility of the county to buy vehicles or for the agents. Put it out. Don't let me say it.
Okay.
I can't answer that, sir, because I don't know.
I don't know how we would be responsible to buy our own vehicles.
Well, I mean, the county approves the budget within the amount of money they have, so I mean, obviously, they're going to approve it. They would be the ones to approve it, but you have to approve things based on being able to pay for it. So that's something you all have inside. I'll leave it in there, though. That clears up what we worried about yourself. There was no intent to put it in there for any other reasons than to have it there, but I understand your point.
So, just to be clear, it does show up on the detention center federal?
Inmate.
Income?
Yeah, it does.
Revenue.
But we have to reduce that, right? Because if he's paying for it out of another fund, then we shouldn't.
Oh, yeah, so you're saying that, yeah, you, six vehicles are approved here, so we just take six off?
Give me just a second, if y'all will, if you want. And I'll, I'll change it, and then you'll, you'll have it in the presentation, everybody will, at least be on the same page. So I'm going to add, I'll put it up there after you prepare, so you'll see it. The item, the first item on the thing was 3,000 increase.
On this one, that's not, that's after.
And then the other one was the, the detention center, right? And that was, those were the only two. Is that correct here?
I have to see again.
Okay. Okay. Let me look here. Okay, so if we do that, the detention, the jail, the federal inmate money, so we can put it on.
So that's your reduction, about 248, 758.
That's what I'm looking at. You can do it on your own track, right?
I like to have it in here so you'll have a record.
Yeah, so you got, so you can work on.
I think that's the board. Okay, we should be back on the board. So the, on the worksheet, I took out the two, the things for, that were on the general fund that we want in the prison fund. So that gives you, we're back to there. The other thing, we had three vehicles for public works and public buildings, and then the cost of living increase for employees. So those are the items on there, you know, and of course, y'all know we can take them on or off. If you live, if you were to approve all of those that way, and you were to increase your taxes to the maximum amount, you would then need $999, you'd need a billion dollars for your out of reserve with the tax increase. If you don't do a tax increase, then you need a 1.5 out of reserve. So that's where we are. If you approve everything, obviously, you got to hash out those things and figure out what you want to do. And I will put this into the PowerPoint that's separate. Now, if we jump then back to the federal inmate program, I did put that in, and let me make it see a little better. So now you can see where we are with that. And of course, you know, it's to be debated, but, you know, it's more money than you have, so you'd have to figure that out. It's, for whatever reason, it's not showing it, but it's like $268,000 more. Two, two.
231.732.
Yeah, it's, it's down at the bottom over there. So that's something you just have to figure out. It does, that does have the vehicle purchases in there, and sheriff may point, you know, should that be in there, or should that be somewhere else? I guess at this point of the discussion, if it's on the other sheet, then you could take it off of here, but then you have to figure out how to pay for it. So for purposes of discussion, you could take that 270 off, which breaks you about even. But if you did what he's, what he's asking for, and you didn't buy the vehicles, then you'd be about breaking here.
I don't understand why we wouldn't buy, the county would not be purchasing the vehicles when there's other departments and recreation that we're going to have to be purchasing vehicles for. I don't understand why we would not be doing that.
Well, there's no reason why you wouldn't, except you might not have the money to do it. I mean, to that point, if you don't have money.
Right. No, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I know if those are county vehicles, county things, that, that should be something that we need to be looking at. But I'm not here to argue that point. I'm, I'm here to listen and learn right now.
Okay, so if, if, if you took the sheriff, if you took the vehicles out, it'd be in a break even from what we see on the board?
It appears that way, yes. Wes, you see the same thing? Yes. Here's the actual sheet. You took the vehicles out. You found a way to buy the vehicles otherwise, you'd actually be, you know, right about break even, $20,000 or whatever.
I, I can't tell you. I'm, I'm concerned about seeing. I, I can't tell you, I'm, I'm concerned about saying not buy vehicles unless it's our responsibility, maybe not the money, but I don't, I'm, I'm gonna just be honest, we're just getting this package, just looking at it ourselves, um, maybe some of you had a chance to look at it and study it and see these people's budget. This is the first time I've ever seen anybody's budget, and, and this, this is not thorough enough for me to say that I can make an informed decision about that, but that's Ms. Lawson.
Nobody else has seen it either? This is usually the point where we're handing out the details.
This is why I say this is not necessarily a working, should be a working meeting, where we could have seen these details, because if y'all are expecting to, I don't know what this council plan to do about letting this be the second reading. It's unfair for this to be a second reading if that's on the table, I don't know what's on the table, but if this is on the table with all these discrepancies, well, all these concerns now, I would, I, I, I'm just saying that this is a lot to take in, and this is not a process you just walk through and say, okay, I'm ready for the second reading, that's not a process for me.
No, we're not asking for a second reading today, this is information only, so you can make your decision. You've got two more months to do it, May and June, so...
Yeah, we had a lot of workshops between the second and third meeting, between the second and third reading last year, there was a lot of workshops going, I mean...
With department heads, too?
We're just, just budget numbers, whenever it was submitted, what was submitted to it, you know, and it's for us to actually look at the numbers at the end of the day to see exactly what, what we felt comfortable with, raising or cutting, or, you know, no, I mean, not saying anything, well, we're, if, uh, you know, I'll use, uh, Ms. Minnick, if she asked, well, I need two more people, and we're negotiating for one more person, that's just kind of, we can afford one, so it was, you know, just as far as this information is workshop, it's new to us, we're looking at it as everybody, and so, uh, we have time to digest it, have a second reading, and still have four, three, four, five, six more, whatever, hopefully not, but I mean, whatever, uh, how many workshops it takes to get it to a, a budget we feel approved, okay, approved, and, yeah, so there'd be, there'd be a lot of work, workshops, I don't know, three, what did we have last year, three, four?
We had like three.
Three last year between second and final reading, and so, uh...
I pasted that in Sheriff's, so everybody has put that in there, so at least has a reference point there. Yes, sir. So, again, when you get deeper into the workshops in the past, you've used this, this sheet, you do whatever, however you want to, but then make a quick, you know, calculation of where you are as far as tax increases and things like that go. So I moved, I took the items out, and put them in the prison slide, and, um, so that gives you the reference point. And usually, after we have these meetings, we'll like, take all the notes, put it back together, send you a note for now.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Is that the only, um, item that we should not really be looking at in this budget? You know what I mean, because I want accurate, I want accurate information, I'm not saying it's not accurate, but, but my first, when I first saw that, you know, it, it made me think one way, but that wasn't even supposed to be up there, so I just want to make sure that everything, everything that we're looking at, everything that we're looking at is, is accurate, so... Is there anything else that we need to take out before we move on?
Nothing, yes, sir.
Well, it was accurate, it was just that the detention center was breaking even, and that was not going to be afforded by...
It wasn't accurate, that was information 119,000.
Well, I guess they had six cars on the detention center, and, and then that's with the eight cars, so I...
Anything else on this one? Okay, so again, you know, when you, when you start a review, you have a copy of the entire budgets, and you have these changes here, and they need you to find the significant changes, and then, um, you know, we have this sheet that we, we noted on there. Now, one thing, um, that I will note, and I will, unless y'all are adding, if you do it, is the public works and public building department indicated that they can survive with the vehicles they have. They probably need for, really probably needs them, but, you know, they can survive on that, they're not responding to emergency cars. So that number can come out, and that'll help you a little bit. Other names in there come out?
If I could, we could probably give away four as opposed to eight. We only have, I think we can deal with is the cost of makers, and if we can get, make as well as we need to, then we can wait for.
Louis, Louis, Phil?
And let me, and I'll explain to you why I'm saying that. We just, along with the school district, agreed to get three new vehicles for SROs. And we have SROs with vehicles now, it's only a year or two old, so what we can do is pass those down, because the school district would be, not school, I'm just saying that, the state would be like giving us three new vehicles, SROs. The ones that we have are only years too old, and we'll just move, shake those down, so we can actually, we can actually cut down with some of the ones that we have, as opposed to eight, we can do four.
Can I make a note, I revised that in there, that's good.
Yeah, honey, uh-huh. We're just trying to get what we need. What I want is everybody to have brand new cars, that, that will never happen, but what we need are some vehicles. If we cut back on my four AM, and all the things that we're going through, that would help.
Sheriff, I have a question for you, please.
Yes, ma'am.
With your employees, how many employees do you have?
Um, between two, thirty, fifty, fifty-six?
Fifty-six.
Actually, fifty-one.
I noticed last year, our report says it was fifty-two, but so you have fifty-six, fifty-one?
Yes, ma'am, and, and we, that, that number is, we are, we have people that actually work strictly at the school district, and you're not considering on the road, now, we have slide for thirty-two of the additional SROs that the school is funding for. That's how we end up at thirty-four, or over thirty-two, but the school district totally, that's actually going to change again, because we're giving another SRO to make sure all the schools, that the funding, all funding and everything is being through DPS, through the state, so there's no cost for us to handle.
Well, I just want to ask this question then, folks, when we get to the compensation page for our employees, how many of your employees made less than $31,000? Which is $15 an hour?
Um, if we count detention and all, I think it's, mm, twelve.
Ms. Sumpirk probably answered that quicker than anybody, so she does that for her job.
Twelve, twelve off, it's twelve.
Are they full-time?
Yes, ma'am.
Full-time, so you have twelve full-time employees making less than $15 an hour?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My reason for asking that, I'll wait till we get to our slide, I need to know how many other departments have employees with less than $15 per hour.
Okay, we can do that. Are we ready to move on from here? Okay, so that was general fund and into the prison fund, uh, we do have several other funds, EMS fund is one. Uh, we've seen the billing revenues increase slightly, about half or more than their revenue to run the department comes from, uh, billing revenue and not, uh, all taxes, so the Mohawk loss did have an impact on them, but it was less proportionally because of the billing, um, the billing income they have there, where they bill insurance companies and that sort of thing. Uh, the budget for that is currently balanced, however, uh, when we first started EMS, we were fortunate that the Marlboro General Hospital Charity Trust gave the county basically a, a million dollar grant, they paid over five years, and so the county was able to go out and get a lease purchase and buy the ambulances we needed. Well, that's running out this year, and we need, uh, we need another ambulance this year. So we have Calvin Cassidy, the director, and I met with them, and are putting in a request, um, and are hopeful that they will renew or continue that. So if that doesn't happen, then, you know, there is a need there for an ambulance, um, you, you may could get by without one, but you're starting to run a lot of expenses on maintenance, and those, those vehicles take a lot of abuse, just like a law enforcement vehicle, you know, they're, they're going where they need to go for a purpose, and, um, and, you know, they're, they're driven and ridden kind of rough, so... So hopefully, that'll come through, we should know something by the end of next week on that, so keep your fingers crossed there. Rural Fire Fund, you know, as you approved here in the last month or so, um, to pay for a portion of their air packs out with a note, with a lease purchase, and a portion with, uh, reserve out of their, um, their account. So what you're seeing there is with the decrease in revenue, and with that new $114,000 lease payment, um, and a couple of things, that they're in a deficit of about $130,000. Now, um, they had a, uh, a sufficient reserve, you know, we tried to aim for six months, had a little more than that, so that's why you have the reserve, the, the, um, air packs are like a ten-year purchase, you know, they don't happen very often. But you do need to, you know, minimize growth and expenses and make sure, you know, you're, uh, you're not dipping into that reserve more than you have to. So this fund is, is healthy, um, it just has that change with that, having to buy those air packs. We have a solid waste fund, which is where the revenue charged to folks for their roll carts goes in, and where we pay the vendor goes out. Uh, right now, it is balanced, um, the concern you have there is, you have to watch it, because sometimes the collection rate, it goes down, um, as you wait for, uh, property to be collected through the tax system, and, um, so we looked at that. You know, some of that stuff, if, if someone pays their house tax late, then that bill's attached to it, and it may get, come in later. But right now, it appears to be budgeted, we changed the rates this year, and, um, they're sufficient to make it balance out.
What's the rate now?
Two thirty-nine, no, it's two thirty-five for regular and homestead is one eighty-five per year.
Um, so, you know, we don't, we haven't had any significant complaints about service with the company, generally, when we have a complaint, uh, this addressed, um, that's a new, renewed contract, so we're, we're happy with that.
How many people working with, in the solid waste?
One and a half.
When you say one and a half, one more than one half?
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
Yeah, and they, they basically just operate the convenience centers, because all the other stuff is handled by the contractor. This doesn't have the enforcement piece in it, if that's what you're getting at, that's in codes enforcement.
Okay, I would tell you to do that.
In a, in a perfect world, this would be a good place to put that, but the revenue's not there, and so it's, it's just in general fund, because they also enforce other things, animal control, solid waste.
So the people who collect the trash, those, they drive those trucks, who do they work, with the contract?
They work for that company we have a contract with.
They work for the company with the contract, okay.
The company says, okay, last month, we collected 4,500 carts, and times this much amount, and send us the money, and everything's included in that.
So the contractor pays their salary?
Yeah, it, it, we just pay the contractor per cart.
Okay.
We pay, we pay a little less for homestead, elderly, or disabled people, which is reflected in the rate we charge. And, um, they send us a bill, this many for that, and this many for the other, and, and we process it, and everything's included, trucks, the gas, everything. Even their, them tipping, them dumping the trash in Bishopville or wherever, it's all in, all rolled together.
They're not county employees?
No, I mean, not at all. Okay. I think we kind of, uh, went over this at length, so this is where we are, this is a good starting point for, you know, how this works. I will, um, I did make a note, Sheriff, to change the vehicles down to four, so we'll adjust that, I'm not going to come out and go back in. So, again, you know, with the things we, we just hashed through, um, we'll get this tightened up and out to you, and that's your good cheat sheet, for lack of a better term, to figure out where you are and what you need to do for the general fund. Ms. Sumpirk is up next.
All right, good afternoon. All right, we're going to talk about compensation. Every two years, the South Carolina Association comes out with a wage and compensation book. Um, as of now, the book was printed sometime in 2021, and it was issued in the year 2022. We're now in 2023, which in essence really makes the book inaccurate as of today, um, due to it being two to three years old. And the job descriptions, the job descriptions in the association book are general job descriptions, but sometimes with the counties, it may not equal up to what the, that person's duties are in the county. Some job descriptions we have where it may have one job description in the book, and that person might be doing two or three other things along with the job, where the salaries are done in the book, it may be that you've taken the total salary, or you divide that person's salary based on the different job duties that they're doing. Um, because of that, lots of times, counties have what they call compensation studies. Today, we have around 11 counties that are in the state that we know of that have done a compensation study. A couple of months ago, Darlington did a compensation study that I participated in, and with their compensation study, they gave you the job titles of a job, the list of duties, asked if your job title was the same job title, and what your job duties were, and you had to list any additional job duties that that description didn't fit, or add job duties that, for that, um, that title that was given. Okay, currently, we went online to just see if we could find a job to give an example, and we found one where Florence County is advertising for a Florence County planner. They're advertising on Indeed, and they're advertising at $54,151, and our South Carolina Association wages booklet has that job at $34,771, and that's just to cite an example. Now, too, to come back and say, I don't like to throw anybody up under the bus, it could just be that Florence County has that, that job may have additional duties, you know, in the book, it may be, uh, where that job may be doing a planner, and might have something else, and the money be broken down by basis of titles, okay? But, too, when we come to compensation, now, we're not competing with just the government entities, we're competing with outside entities. For example, recently, for our non-management and our hourly positions, some of those positions, they require that you be certified. Well, I'm, I'm going to do, um, tax positions, a lot of tax positions require certification. Well, with those positions, and getting that certifications for, to appraise property, to appraise homes, those jobs are also in the private sector, and some of those jobs pay three times as much as what the county jobs pay. So lots of times, it becomes difficult for us to find people who are appraisers or have certain certifications when it comes to appraising codes and regulations. Now, too, we've gotten into with, um, the state surplus, now the state is beginning to pay their employees more money, which is good, because I came from the, being a state employee, I do appreciate that, but it, when it comes to our state positions, which are the same as the county position, have the same title and have the same duties, the state is now paying the county. So those, those people whom we used to be able to say, okay, well, come work for the county, now wanting to stay in their state position. And that comes with like, those jobs are like your administrative assistant positions, your, um, your equipment operators, your regulatory positions, all of those people are now wanting to stay with the state and not come to the county. Then we have the industry, now we know most time industry pays more, but lots of times, we have applicants who want to get out of industry, because they're working six or seven days, and they want to come work for the county. We interview them, because most of the time, they are the best qualified candidates, we offer them the job, and what happens, they can't come, because they're making 15, 20,000 dollars more than what the county's offering. So we're seeing that when it comes to compensation for, for our positions. Now, at the bottom, we listed a county positions, the comparable jobs that are in the private sector, what they have been advertising as their range of pay, and what the county pays. And as you can see, that most of the jobs are outweighing what we're paying, they might be in the range for some of them, you have like your administrative jobs, you have your department head positions... You have like your administrative jobs, you have your department head positions and you have your, um, manager level positions. And these are, in public works, these are the jobs that we are, are the people we're, we're competing with outside industry to obtain to come work for us. Because we want those persons that are, are qualified, that may have some experience, that may have the certifications, and we have to compete with the private sector in order to get those people. Okay? Um, the council, and I'm not, you all have been very helpful in helping us reach, um, higher levels of compensation over several years. In 2017, the salaries were less than the average, were less than average, were less than the average minimum salary in other counties. And that didn't include the private sector. Council has acted annually on staff recommendations to address the issue. Each year, we try to do something and we present it to you guys and you all act on it. Now, council has also allocated a budget amount and authorization in the budget ordinance each year for salary adjustments. And so that's something that we present to you when we're doing the budget for salary adjustments. And I think Mr. Mullen said, discussed that, um, during our first, uh, meeting, county council meeting last, uh, few weeks ago about the adjustments.
May I stop you, ma'am? You brought out something I want to know. We have a, Mr. Chair, I want to ask you, do you have a copy of our bu- budget ordinance?
We, we do have one, yes. Do you want, do you want a copy of it?
I, I do. And then the second thing I, I want to bring out, you brought out, um, concerning, go back to your ni- last slide. I noticed that you're looking, having us look at department heads and the administrator in this chart that you're giving, showing us, um, and I know none of these people make it, but do we have any employees in the county making less than $15 an hour?
We may, meaning if you're asking under your $30,000.
Thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay, we may. Now, is that based on how many hours of service?
Full-time for, is, is a normal hour, 40 hours per week, is that full-time?
We, we do, we do our average at 40 hours, but our employees usually work 37, 45.
Right, but based on a 40-hour week?
We do.
That's a good point you made, uh, the ministry employees, is that they work 37 hours.
Right, and, and that, but it's.
Well, I mean, I mean, make sure everybody understands that is, if you take the amount per hour people make working for the county and run it up 40 hours, it, it runs the salary up. So people actually work in less hours than 40 hours when you compare them. If I remember correctly, the lowest start of any grade or step is twenty.
Twenty, was 26?
Yeah.
Well, 26 is not $15 an hour.
No, we were just trying to answer your question if we have any, and I'm not sure how many here, we can look.
I, I do want those numbers, please, because I'm concerned about the cost of living for everybody in this county. Because if I had to feed my family, the family of four, if I'm making 20, and I, I know that you have some employees making $24,000 and you're telling me, giving me a cost of living increase of 2%, it would take me almost seven, eight years to even make that money. So I'm concerned, but if I make $65,000 an hour, I, I, uh, annual salary, six hun- sixty-five thousand, it's not going to take me but five years, I'll be making over $71,000. So my concern is, I want to understand that I'm concerned about the average person in this county, if I go to McDonald's, I will make $15 an hour. But if I'm working for this county and, and I'm, oh, I've been working here five years and six years and it's going to take me about 10 years just to get up to $31,000, I would be, all of us should be concerned about that. Because you asked us to be, that we want to keep good people. I do want to keep good people and I want to keep good qualified people. But I want to be real here. We know that we have people in this county who's not able to feed their families. And before we even look at anything else, we should all really consider, are we making sure that our employees, our, the lowest paid people on the totem pole are being equally compensated for the work that they do?
Okay. Ms. Lawson, you want, and even thirty-one thousand?
It's thirty-one, two hundred.
Two, okay.
That's $15 based on a 40-hour per week. And if you put it in your calculator, anybody can calculate that.
Would it be helpful if we come up with the impact increasing anyone?
Right, right. That's what I want to know. See what the impact will, will do.
Okay, we can do that.
All right. Going on to compensation adjustments. Now, we've done the 2% of cost of living increase each year and we have periodic reviews of salary ranges. Now, I change this up with based on your job duties and the markets or the conditions, meaning, um, whether or not we've done, you're, a person that has been, had job duties that are combined or whether we've added additional job duties. In most departments, we try to do cross-training. And cross-training means that you're able to enhance the skills of a certain person so they're able to make more or you are able to, um, eliminate a per, uh, a vacancy because you have people who are cross-trained and you're trying to give them more income.
I like that point you just made because I think it's important that all departments and all, e- even other elected officials in their department, that they just make sure that they do cross-training. Because once, once someone leave, someone else needs to be able to know how to do those jobs. And someone else, that's a way to promote within, enhance and within. But if I go to an office and see someone's been sitting as a clerk for five and six and seven years, coming in and not being able to, to move up, I would be concerned about that. But then you're going to walk in and hire someone just off the blue and say, you're going to get the, the more skilled job. So I do believe in cross-training across the board for every department and even, I can't speak for any other elected officials, but they may need to consider that too in their offices.
Okay. All right. And we're considering when we look at compensation adjustments, not just government jobs, but just like I said before, the jobs in our area, the jobs in the, um, where we, in driving distance, because lots of people do commute to Chara, um, Rockingham, Hamlet, Florence and other places for employment.
What's the driving distance for the average employee from our county? Where, how far is the, how far of a driving distance are the people who are working for this county having this drive?
I don't know that.
I mean, do you have an idea how many of them live in?
Most of our employees do live in.
Live here?
Yes, ma'am.
But do we have a few that maybe out of the county that?
Yeah, or the highly technical job.
We do.
The high, highly technical.
The ones that you got to file a certification, EMS particularly.
EMS, something like that.
People like she was talking about a minute ago, that have to be certified in something or have some kind of higher level of experience sometimes you're, you can't find anybody open. See, the days, it's changed a lot, even in the last 10, 15 years, um, where you don't have, you don't have more people than you need to do the job. Because county jobs and these two elected officials that they can tell you, become very technical. So there's, there are not a lot of opportunities to hire somebody and then, and then you hope they figure it out. And so it's resulted in, you know, having to be aggressive to find people.
Let's do a better job of making sure we can do some training for all people to get them certified and get some training for all people in this county to get the certification that they need to come up on the scale.
Well, I don't know that we're doing a bad job. We've paid.
I don't know, but I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, that's what you said. We've paid for a lot of training, we're very open, have amounts in the budget, council's passed the budget. We have a number of officials, people, and I'm not going to call them out, that have moved up in the organization because they went and they got certified in this or got certified in that. I know since Doris and I've been here particularly, we've been very aggressive about giving people opportunity to learn and move up. And that's how they earn to make a little more money. They can do two things, so they can cover this person. But, you know, we have done a good job with that and we can provide some more examples if you'd like them. But, um, you know, there, there are opportunities for here, the people that want to do more, um, than they're doing. And, and we've sort of thinned out from the days where somebody just sits there and then we do what you give them to do and then they don't want to do anything else.
Okay.
Got a good crew of people working for the county for the most part, and I think elected officials feel the same way. Um, we're just trying to keep them going and get their salaries up. Just the 2% you've done since '07, 17, if you compound it, you know, you're talking about a good bit, you've gotten it up. And, um, and that's helped you keep people and helped you attract good people.
And also with that, Ms. Lawson, what we've looked at is exposure to, for some of the jobs that we have here, lots of people don't understand what, what employment is at the county for them to go and get the certification. So we've tried to meet with, with the school and get involved in different activities so that the people will know what you need to do to get, to become, um, a medical technician, uh, emergency medical services, what you're needing to do to, um, become a, a field appraiser, that type stuff. Okay? Um, and then our last overall review was in early 20, um, 2022.
Bring me your copy of that, Ms. Lawson. You, I think it's in there, you obviously weren't here. They'll show you some of the step, grade step changes so you can see some detail. And I'll send it out to everybody.
Anything else?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to do, the notes and all after this are the same thing we went through last time. I'm not going to read them to everybody again, um, unless somebody wants me to. The, uh, the only thing is, you know, a couple of points. The fund balance is something that you, you need to protect as much as you can. At the same time, if you hit a year with 8% inflation like this year, is even as conservative as I, as I have been in presenting to you about keeping that low, this is a year where you might go a little higher. Because that's why you have the reserve. Um, you know, inflation's diff- difficult to predict, you know, you may need, you sometimes have to use it. And you're in good shape. You just had an audit, a complete audit and showed that you were at the right target for your, um, for your reserve. Um, we will, our staff, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry. On the operating cost, with the, the balanced budget now, with us going into like $365,000 in it, um, in the tax increase, what do we have left month-wise in the operating cost? Are we still at the 5.5 months?
Let me do math.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you.
You want to be at six, but you're probably end up being at five.
Yeah.
Instead of, we're like five and a half, five, three, four, five.
Okay, so even with the, after this, we're still there?
That's a good question. You know, in North Carolina, the state actually, I don't know if you do this, the state actually watches you and they'll come in if you drop below like a two-month, uh, reserve. So it's good practice and something we've worked hard to do.
Yeah, but the school districts in South Carolina, if, if they're less than, uh, one month, they are considered to be at risk in their classifieds, such, and there's a whole series of oversizes with that district, that's something that's, uh, seriously.
And just wrapping up a couple of points, you know, that I made notes of while we went through this, um, there are things that are expectations that you do, vehicles and that kind of thing. But you're at a point this year where you have so much money and that's all you have. So you've got to really go through it and, and, you know, my suggestion would be to priori, prioritize those requests, you know, because that's the easiest way to do it. Um, and, you know, there, there are just some things you can't avoid, you know? And so you, you're, you're going to probably need to do some vehicles, but they're going to, there's not enough money to do that without, without running a bunch of deficit up and having a max tax increase. So that's something you're going to have to struggle with, um, this year. Uh, other than that, it's kind of is what it is. Um, again, I'm going to tweak everything that we, that was presented based on the notes that we made and the comments and the back and forth about the general fund, so you have that. I do, I do think it's important that you continue to keep the finance department involved in this along with the sheriff's department because you don't want to underestimate expenses or overestimate revenue, the golden rule. You don't want to go in there and be, be optimistic about how much is coming in and be conservative about how much you're going to spend. We really don't, we have a better feel for this, but only this week did we, did we figure out that the medical bill will go up. You know, the food bill will go up and we'll have to reimburse the general fund. There's just pieces of this that we need to make sure because all of a sudden you're leeching off the general fund and you don't have any money to leech off of. So you've got to look at that, um, and we have and can continue to do that. Now, the only, the only part that, what, the, the fund that wasn't in here, there's, there's obviously the recreation and all that stuff. You guys have to figure out what you're doing with that. That will be keyed in or is keyed in at what you have already approved. Um, that's obviously something you want to discuss, I assume, um, as you go forward. And again, we're, we're a little bit ahead of time having this, believe it or not. This is a lot of detail, Ms. Lawson. Um, you've got two more months. You've got two more months to hash through this. I don't, I don't think, and I don't think Wes thinks or Doris thinks, that we've really got anything out there we're waiting on from the state that we don't know about. Um, there's talk again this year of the state properly funding the local government fund, but we look at it and it's not going to change anything, um, because of a couple of reasons. It's based on population and we lost population since they cut it in '08. And with inflation, they haven't increased the formula, so even if they fund it, it's in 2008 formula. So for years, those of you who are new, we got, the state cut us by half a million or more than that in '08 and it was a big deal. Chairman Stein and Steve, y'all are here, or Vice Chairman Stein. Um, and, and we, we whined about it for years and now, even if they funded, it's not going to really help us any. So I don't see any pots of money coming out. And I guess the last thing is be careful about recurring expenses, paying for salary increases out of a fund that can go away very quickly. No matter, the hardest, stone-cold council person's not going to vote to cut people out when that grant runs out. Got to be careful about things that keep eating. So I, I can answer, try to answer any more questions you have. Okay?
Any questions?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
This package that we have here, um, this package that we have here with these figures from the general expenses, now this is, is this every department and also elected officials?
It is.
Is that what?
The only parts aren't in there, that recreation thing, and, um, we have a number of little accounts that are used for grants to run through and all that, and we'll get you that. This includes, the general fund typically includes every function of the county. The only separate ones are, the only separate ones of any consequence are EMS, rural fire and solid waste, and they're in here.
They're in here?
Yes, ma'am.
This should give you a great starting point to, to go through it. Both the expense and the revenue for those, those accounts are in there.
As, as I said, I hadn't had a chance to digest any of this yet because I'm just scanning it. But I have skimmed through it, um, to look at, um, I see the magistrate and all of that's in there, but I, I do want to take my time to look at, at this.
That's, that's what we're all going to do. And you're going to give us the updated.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tweak what happened here and then, you want a printed one or an email? I might want a printed one if you hold it in hand.
Printed.
Yeah, and then it'll be in color and it's a little easier to see the ins and the starts. The other thing that I think is valuable that we haven't done in the past is we're going to include a sheet, probably just one sheet, that has department and how many full-time and how many part-time employees they have. Because with these larger departments, as Doris can tell you, when I first came here, it was, you couldn't keep track of how many were approved and how many were there. So we now have a chart, org chart, that we make sure when one's empty, we don't double hire. We actually doubled hired one in 2017. So I think it's important to have in there, this is how many people council approved, you know? And, and if you need any more, you've got to come back to council. So we'll include a sheet with that. So the takeaway is the action items that I took away from here are, are edit this based on the comments. Ms. Lawson wants, um, to know how many are less than $15 an hour, what the impact would be of bringing them up to $15 an hour, correct?
Right.
Is that correct?
Full and part-time people.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, we don't typically have a bunch of part-time, but we'll include that.
How many part-time people do we have then?
Oh, my gosh. How many do you think? Not count EMS, because EMS is a different animal.
Okay.
General fund.
I think our point is just that we want to make sure that everybody is making a, a livable wage in the county. And, and if we can do that, that's where she's aiming at.
We can.
And I, I also want to know, um, just for my clarification, with. with the, uh, the sheriff, uh, request there, I think he's trying to, is he trying to say, and I should have asked him when he was here. He's trying to say that everything that he's asked for is for a salary increase. It's no longer going to be a salary increase, it's going to be a, a bonus type effect. This is what he's saying, I think this is what I heard him say.
Well, I wish you were here too, because I'm not trying to talk behind his back, but you don't need departments doing their own compensation.
I mean, I know, he, he, he would, he would bring it to us, but even if he did, did that, it's still the same money. But, um, you know, my, 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 my thing is, if it's going to be paid by the inmate, um, program, I don't have a problem with it. I, I really don't. But if it, if it causes us to have, to raise taxes, then that's something that we need to, to discuss, you know, but, I just want to be clear.
I, well, we'll get some clarity because you, I got the same confusion you did. I, I agree with you.
And see, we started in January, we got a letter that said it was going to bring in four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Then we got a letter in March saying it's going to bring in two hundred and fifty something. And Wes goes through it and we look at it, whatever is in here. It's, it's a moving target because it's never like, well, how many people did you have last month? We had fifteen people. One guy, they might put me in jail and I'm there for five days and then I'm gone. And then, you know, so it's like every day you've got to look at it. And you're two months into it, you know, so it's.
Has, I mean, just.
It's a little bit skittish for me.
But that's, that's still new.
Chairman, uh, but, I mean, we didn't, has the cars, I don't know, whenever we moved forward, the cars last year with the budget amendment, that was the first, the first whatever X amount of dollars was supposed to come out. Has that, has that already been?
That has not been drafted on that account.
Okay.
We have, we have accumulated enough to pay for the car here.
Okay.
Hopefully by the end of this, this year looks like.
But is that the same car he was requesting eight for?
No, the middle of the year he came in here, not on the agenda, y'all bought him two cars. And the only thing good was that, that he had to pay it back. So we've been running this program now for two months. And you don't have ninety thousand dollars to pay back.
And that's probably ahead, you know, because it's only, it's only sixty days. I mean, we, we keep giving out these numbers and we're trying to make people paranoid about the numbers. But, you know, for sixty days, that's a lot of money. And if, if it continues on that path, he'll have that and more, you know.
What did you get for that full month?
The full month, we got twenty-two five. And so the question will be, we'll find out in May what the reimbursement was for April.
And when is, when is the target date for the, the, the total reimbursement for the car?
The minute it hits ninety thousand dollars.
Big part?
When it hits ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, okay. So, and, so that's not going to be long at that rate.
Or at least as of the June collection.
Right. So ninety thousand dollars, it will not be long at that rate because it's still a, a, a significant increase, you know, and he'll be able to pay that back. And probably what he's asking for, um, as long as he does it, um, in, um, bonuses, he'll probably be able to do that without affecting our budget and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Chair, I noticed that we have two other elected officials here and their budget probably is in this package, right? There, is there a budget in this package?
Yeah, there were no changes to their request.
So y'all have no changes in your budget?
My request was one, my, um, staffing was just four decrease.
Right.
And also my research system, uh, because of her, no experience, it wasn't great.
And also, um.
And then I just noticed that we haven't, I'm glad to see that they're here, but in all fairness to all the other elected officials that's been elected too, because I heard the word tax increase kind of thrown out there a little bit, that, that may help our budget. So if that's the case, the treasurer and auditor also may need to be around this table. Because if we're to, I, I'm not even proposing tax increase yet, I just want to make sure. But if we're talking about anything with tax increase, I, I sure hope that we can get some of other people around the table. I know they may have met with the finance.
The, the auditor and treasurer don't decide tax increases. You tell them what you want to do, one of them generates the bill and the other collects the money.
And they have no say so in it.
That's it. They don't, they don't, you guys, you decide this. And nobody's trying to make anybody paranoid. These are facts and you can say they're wrong, but they're facts and it's serious about this. And I liked what you said, Mr. Strumlin, you know, things that you can do that come out of there that aren't like salary increases, but are bonuses, you can control that. Please don't think this is being overblown, it's very serious. You got a huge increase in expenses that you decided to do and now you have to pay for it.
Even with things in place, we're going to have to max out what the state allows.
Well, even if they run an eight hundred eighty, if you don't, if you don't change anything, if you don't approve any budget request, then you would be eight hundred eighty thousand dollars out of, out of reserve. Now, it's not insane to think you go a little higher than you have in the past because that's why you got it, as long as you don't dip down. But, yeah, I mean.
But one remarkable change that has happened this year that was not in your budget last year is the fact that in, um, recreation has increased tremendously. You're that recreation project that we have taken on, I'm going to say we, that we have taken on. There's a lot of expense in there. You've had two people who started off with high salaries and then they have another salary. Then you have upkeep of that property. You have taken, we have taken on a big increase in that recreation.
And that's, as you, I think you said, that's not in the general fund, but you had to.
But you sat here and approved that though.
And that is a separate budget.
Right, there's other things that we need to look at too, because I had a request from the voter registration office for another site, they need storage sites, they need another building, they need, you know, stuff to do. And all of that comes out of our budget as well. But I do, you know, because it was requested, I would like for the council to take a, a serious look at where they are and the amount of space that they're working in. And I think they've already talked to the minister about it.
And they've talked about it for years, it's just a matter of having someone put it without spending significant money.
Right.
There may be a couple of options that we've talked around, um, I won't say aloud and tell you later. But it's just been money and a place to do it, you know.
But I, but I most, I need to go on record requesting that we look at that.
Well, they, they, they requested.
That's what I'm saying, we not hearing, we, you are hearing from the departments, but I'm just saying it would be good if sometime they were here to say, Mr. Chair, let this is, these are things that we want in our budget too. You can see something on paper, but when you see that person face to face and they're able to tell you, explain to you what they have on paper, it makes, it makes it clear, it makes it clear for me.
Ms. Lawson, there are certain procedures and channels they got to go through rather than come.
I know.
Right. And that, that's regular by state laws.
I want to thank, you know, we've got two of them in here. I mean, nobody's asked for anything crazy. Everybody kind of understands we're going to try to do this. Um, if we have a situation like, you know, somebody trying to hire somebody and they want to tweak within the range, then we try to help with that. I would think you would agree with that. When Judge McCoy came on, we were able to use our budget to help renovate our office and things like that. So we, we got a pretty good relationship with folks and, um, try to do what we can to help within the budget.
I got one, one other question and then I'll, I'll be finished. Yeah, one other question. Have you or staff identified any departments that have been over budgeted that maybe we can, if they're, if they're, if they're over budgeted, then maybe we can adjust that and move that money elsewhere?
No, the only, the only significant budget changing, um, overruns are in the sheriff's department where we're using overtime to provide police to municipalities who collect taxes to do that. And I don't get any feedback from that. That's for y'all, because I can't, I can't make that happen, but that's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars right there.
That's a request, but what I'm saying is that we're, we're, if there, is there any department that say we have a budget of fifty thousand dollars, but they only use thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah. Usually, when, when I first came here, everybody had their own hidey hole. You know, every department tried to have their own little special project account where they could kind of have, you know, a hidey hole. We took that away because we, we, I preached, look, if you need something and you really need it and it's justified, we will find a way to do that within the budget. So we, we've lost that, where you look at the end of the year and you see people spending money just to run the budget, you know, to get what they got. Don't really see that anymore. You do see when somebody has a vacancy, but we always budget to that being filled because this needs to be filled. But no, I don't, um, and we have spent hours going through this, see, um, anything that's, you know, an obvious thing to cut. I mean, and, and I say we, I'm talking about four or five people sitting there with it on the screen going through it, looking at it. Oh, pull that, pull that thing on this, look at, see what that was.
And I know a lot of this.
Pretty clean shot.
A lot of this work has been done over the past years.
Well, you get it to a point where you, you can see when you have something going on and we keep it in track. The department heads, you know, have access to the reports, see where they are. It just, I mean, the thing is, you know, with, with the business of government is so much of it is required, you know, to do. And aside from people, ad people or whatever, it's pens and papers and cases of copy and paper and utilities and things like that, just not something you really could cut.
Well, I know like the recreation department, which I'm glad to see, I am really glad to see, that there is a, a request for eighty-two thousand dollars. I mean, you know, that's, that says that that department is getting ready to go to work. To me, that's what.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll note it, you know, he would, he'd like to have twice or three times that much.
Yeah, it may, it may wind up being more than that.
But we sat down, we sat down and we figured it out. We said, okay, well, can we more permanently assign somebody in public works to help him in the season?
Right.
You know, can we do this, can we do that? But it came down to, we hired him to get more people playing.
That's right.
We hired him to have the right equipment for these kids to play when he was going up. So he may be sitting here six months from now, somebody come in here and say, hey, we need to have an amendment because he's up a little bit, but it's based on volume. And those don't scare me, you know, if we got ten people playing, it's this bunch, we got twenties, this bunch.
Right, and that's, and that's good to me, that's good to me. And in two years from now, if we look at his budget and it's in line, if he didn't, just two hundred dollar dollars, if he didn't, if he doesn't need that, he could come back, hopefully he would come back and say, well, we don't need that now because our program, this is what it's doing, so this is where my budget needs to be. We need to do that for every department.
Well, I mean, we, we really, you know, he's new, so we, we challenged it, you know, and we figured out how there can be some more, uh, interest fees, like without putting a burden on people, you know. Had a plan, you know, you need a plan. He had a plan to be able to help folks that can't afford to pay, but not just let everybody pay for free. Things like that, so hey, I need this much money, but I can increase this by a little bit of it, you know. And that's the way we try to run things over the years and it's, um, it's been pretty good with that. It's just inflationary things, it's, uh, a little lessened population, it affects some, affects some of our revenue in this county.
Any other further questions?
I do, Mr. Chair, um, while we're here, uh, we'll, we'll be having another budget meeting.
Absolutely. Um, well, when you get.
Shouldn't we set the budget meeting?
Well, we had to get all the. Do we have?
Maybe a council meeting come up, that'd be a good time to do it.
Why, why would that be a good time to do it?
We've only got, what, two weeks? Is that about right?
Council meeting and a budget meeting is not the same thing.
Well, we will, we will definitely have another workshop. If you'd like to come up with some dates, um, how soon should we have another workshop?
This is a workshop, we can't make any decisions, it's just a workshop.
So we'll, we'll come up and.
I, I just want to make sure that all of us are clear about FOIA and I have copies of that. I just want to be sure that this council, that we're going to have the duty of workshops, but when it comes down to that second and that third reading of, and the way it's set in this, that we go on where we are going to be clear, that we're going to follow FOIA guidelines to be sure that public hearings, not something that's posted on that door, but posted in the newspaper about the budget, it has to be publicized.
Have we not done that, Ms. Lawson?
I don't know, not.
We follow the rule every year, nobody here has not followed.
But a, a date for, for, the date for that pub.
We are very transparent on, on all of this.
Date for that.
The notice, the paper has to be fifteen days before it's bound, notice, it has to be done every year, whatever point something is yet.
Right, and that way the public can have, can have a time to come in.
All the clock.
Right. I just, I, I don't know, I just want to be sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't have a copy of the budget ordinance, I don't have a copy of that, so I don't know that, that may be.
You've requested that and we'll.
But I didn't have that, to know that in advance.
We, we have followed, I mean, protocol, I mean, until we, we were down to meetings, move the last meeting just so we could make it. I mean, whenever it sounded tough to make sure we hit the deadlines and, uh, and make sure that we, we, we have hit the deadline. So nobody would come in and say we didn't, so we have, we have, we have done those. Like I said, there's a lot, a lot of workshops that's done, uh, with a budget, I mean, what we've asked staff to get with numbers and, uh, and what impact that would be, that's going to take a little time, uh, changing the things. So I think we, once we can get some, uh, information back, I think then we can, then it'd be appropriate to set another workshop.
I, I do.
But until we get the, the stuff, I don't know how, what would, what we need to do to have a workshop on until we get the other information, so that makes sense.
We've sent staff off to, to gather stuff, information.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjourn for three.
Before we do that, I would like to thank staff for the hard work on, on this. Uh, this has been very, uh, trying, I know, to try to get this thing budgeted and we've got plenty more work to do, so. Uh, we'll, and then a motion to adjourn.
I just want to ask a question. The, um, the stuff that's been shown on the screen, um, I know that y'all have a copy of it, but can us as elected officials or department heads get a copy?
Sure.
Okay. And the only other thing, I'd just like to go on record, Mr. Strumlin, that as far as my budget goes, the family court department is completely funded by the federal money that I collect or, um, well, we're paid to collect child support. And that the county doesn't even pay for paper plate in the family court.
That's been very helpful on the issue.
Yeah, and I, I just like that, that the only thing that the county funds in my office is the clerk of court.
And that's good information to note.
Yeah, and I have five employees, five females that are less than fifteen dollars an hour and my four babies make ten dollars an hour. That, that's just information.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
All, all in favor? All right, it's unanimous.